All right. Good afternoon. We're convening the Senate Committee on Transportation on our agenda here at the State Capitol as well as over Zoom. This is our agenda, which was previously deferred from Tuesday at 3:30. So we have about oh, seven or eight bills up on our agenda today. If we do have your written testimony, please feel free to summarize your testimony and your comments. We want to make sure we get through everybody. And with that said, also note that we have some concurrent hearings going on. So some of our members are over with the Ways and Means Committee in a series of joint committee hearings. So we'll have folks popping in and out. So that said, why don't we get started? Up first is Senate Bill 3312 relating to the Photo Red Light Imaging Detector Systems Program. Excuse me, which makes clarifying amendments to 291J to reflect legislative intent and makes other amendments relating to the Photo Red Light Imaging Detector Systems Program. And testifying first on 3312 is the Department of Transportation.
Chair Lee, Vice Chair Inouye, and honorable members of the Transportation Committee, Jay Bhutai for DOT. I must say that you guys are the hardest working committee, and it's an honor and privilege to testify. We stand on our submitted written testimony in support. Thank you, Chair.
All right. Thank you. Thank you from the hardest working department. Honored to work together. Okay. Up next is Department of the Prosecuting Attorney, City County of Honolulu. In support, Honolulu Police Department.
Present Chair. Sorry, I cut off a bit. Not present Chair.
Oh, okay. Thank you. In support, and Chad Tony Gucci in support. That's all the testimony we have for this measure. Are there any questions? If not, all right, let's move on to SB 150 relating to ignition interlock devices, which requires consecutive terms of imprisonment for anyone convicted as a repeat or habitual offender if arising from the same conduct as conviction for operating a vehicle without an ignition interlock device, and requires those who have an ignition interlock device to have government issued ID in their immediate possession. And finally extends the look back period under provisions relating to ignition interlock, as well as expands the offensive tampering with the device. And testifying first on 150 is the Department of Transportation.
Chair, we stand on our submitted written testimony in support.
Thank you. Up next is Office of the Public Defender.
Not the present Chair.
Thank you. In opposition, Office of the Prosecuting Attorney, City County of Honolulu.
Not present Chair.
And Mothers Against Drunk Driving. In support. That's all the testimony we have on this measure. Are there any questions? If not, let's move on then to SB 2133 relating to the statewide traffic code. This prohibits any person whose driver's license has been revoked for driving while under the influence of an intoxicant from being eligible for a driver's license without providing proof of compliance with the ignition interlock law, and prohibits a person from driving for two years if the person does not own or have use of a vehicle for the installation of an ignition interlock device. So testifying first on this is the Department of Transportation.
Thank you, Chair. We stand on our testimony in support. Thank you.
Thank you. Up next is the Office of the Public Defender.
And good morning, Chair. Members of the Committee, Alan Akow, Deputy Public Defender, on behalf of the Office of the Public Defender. We are offering opposition to this particular bill. Most of the comments we in opposition are codified in our testimony. But the the biggest thing we want the committee to know is that we do believe there's some inequity built into the way the bill the bill is described. So we have to offer opposition. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Up next is the Prosecuting Attorney in support. Honolulu Police Department.
Not present Chair.
Thank you. In support, Tara Casanova Powell Consulting. In support. Smart Start.
Good afternoon, Chair, Vice Chair, Members of the Committee, Joanne Hamaji Oto, Territory Operations Director for Smart Start LLC, Hawaii Corporate Office, offering testimony in support of Senate Bill 2133 relating to the statewide traffic code. We support closing a gap in the current law which allows people who have already pled guilty, been convicted at or administratively adjudicated, to have been impaired while driving to continue to attempt to drive drunk without limit on the restoration of their license. This is not only wrong, but dangerous. We support this bill because a person who blows into an interlock device while impaired is demonstrating that they cannot yet drive sober. The bill recognizes that a driver's license is a privilege that should be granted only to those who can drive safely. Under Senate Bill 2133, previously adjudicated drunk drivers using an interlock must have a certain period of no recordable violations before removal, known as a compliance-based regulation. This is law in at least 34 states. Interlock compliance-based removal laws are important teaching sober driving behavior. Currently, OVUI offenders in Hawaii merely have their interlock removed when it's time for to end a program, or whether they have proven sobriety to drive or not, or they wait out their revocation period and do not install an interlock, choosing to drive unlicensed and uninterlocked. Since the implementation of Hawaii's interlock law in 2011, we have prevented more than 100,000 drunk driving attempts. The interlock did what it's supposed to do. It prevented drunk driving and the injury and death it caused. An engine program is available for those that qualify to lessen the costs associated with the interlock. It is already working. We urge you to pass Senate Bill 2133 to help save lives and keep Hawaii roads safe. Thank you for allowing me to testify on this important bill.
Thank you. Up next is TIRF, and I have to apologize. I'm not sure what that stands for. Testifying in support and FAAR, which I also don't have in front of me. Also in support. And I believe that's all the testimony we have on this measure. Are there any questions? If not, I've got just a couple on this one. Office of the Public Defender, Mr. Akow, are you still with us?
Yes, Mr. Chair.
Hi, thanks. You know, obviously, reading through your testimony, you guys had raised some concerns about this. Enough to oppose the bill, but are there, and we, this is, I'll just note, obviously not the only interlock bill that we have up. There's a couple others that we looked at a couple days ago, and I think moving through the Judiciary Committee as well. On the whole, I mean, it seems like this tries to clarify and close some of the loopholes, I guess you could call them, that still exist. Is there a different approach that can still make sure that folks who aren't supposed to be driving aren't driving at the end of the day?
I'm sure. Also, first, some clarification, Mr. Chair. There's almost two mechanisms for which a license suspension will be granted against a defendant for a DUI type offense. One by the court and the other by the Administrative Driver's License Revocation Office. When looking at the way the bill is drafted, it seeks to extend it to that maximum two-year period. But when we look at the need for that, and what it does is it really removes the judge's discretion. And when you remove the judge's discretion to look at the facts of the case, look at the circumstances of the defendant and offering what they believe is a reasonable suspension period. Now, we also have opportunities where the judge will defer to the Administrative Driver's License Revocation Office so that they're in concordance. So if the Administrative Driver's License Office is going to suspend someone's license for two years, then often the judge will use his discretion to defer that decision that's already been made to be in sync with the office. But what we see now with this is if the office were to, the Office of the Administrative Driver's License Office were to say, well, it's a one-year suspension, but the courts now would have to take the position that it's two years, it can kind of be at conflict, at which who's going to have the priority? And it can confuse the drivers who really want to just seek to be back in compliance. We do believe that there's, you know, positivity to having these discussions. But that's one of the issues we see that can be at conflict. The second thing when it comes to what happens when someone whose license is suspended under a DUI, their license is revoked under that particular statute, and any subsequent driving offense would subject that person to jail, even if it's not drunk driving, right? But they're not supposed to be driving period. But when we have measures that enforce additional restrictions on the driver or the defendant, there's some inequity that someone who drives drunk may not go to jail, but someone who drives and runs a red light or makes a bad turn after their license is suspended would do mandatory jail. So we see there's there's some conflict in the way judges discretion is removed when they just have to strictly follow some of the maximum penalties.
Okay, thanks. Let me let me stop you there real quick. Is Smart Start with us still?
Yes.
Hi, thanks. Just following up on this. So obviously, I think you heard some of the concerns raised by the public defender. When it comes to, I guess, the term of the required term of having ignition interlock installed and so forth, and judges discretion based on the case to do that, is there is there a fix that, is there is there a happy medium here, or are we talking about a black and white, either we're doing it or we're not? Between what the public defenders is saying versus, you know, where the bill's at right now and so forth?
Well, we have, the most important thing I can tell you is that it, this is about compliance-based provision, which 34 states have already done it. And we do currently have a form of a compliance program in Hawaii for those that have received lifetime revocations from ADLRO. Lifetime revocation meaning that they've driven drunk multiple times to the point that their license was taken away. That group of individuals who are seeking to get relicensed have to have the interlock for five years with the last two years showing a compliance, no violations over .04 breath alcohol. So we do have a process in place already for that group, and those reports are sent, compiled and sent to the Hawaii Department of Transportation when a request is made. So
Over .08, right?
.04 for that group, the lifetime revocations, yes. So that's, we do have a compliance-based program for for that, for that group. So in some ways, we do have a compliance-based program. We just want it for all people that have had their license taken away, replicated for drunk driving.
Okay, thank you. And then real quick for the prosecutors, I, I know you guys submitted testimony. Oh, there you are. Hi.
I'm so sorry, Chair.
Oral testimony, but since you're here. So real quick, so to that point, I mean, your guys' testimony, you support the intent, but had suggested language from a totally separate bill, which somewhat conflicts with what's in here. I guess what I'm trying to find, just talking to everybody, is is there is there a compromise here that satisfies everyone, or is are we barking up the wrong tree?
Um, not sure necessarily what all the conflicting interests are. I'm so sorry that I was I was late because I wasn't, I didn't have the link to the hearing until about five minutes ago. But we do feel that the bill we referenced is a happy medium in that it would incentivize more people to get ignition interlock. Right now, only about 20% of offenders are understanding. It's typically about 20% of offenders get ignition interlock in the first place. The others, I suppose, just say that they, I mean, they don't have a vehicle or a legal registered insured vehicle that they could get an ignition interlock on, or they didn't have their license, various reasons. They just choose not to get one. And under our current law, they don't have to get one as long as they don't operate a vehicle, or at least, yes, allegedly don't operate a vehicle.
Yes, I think to the point that was raised earlier about the, and this kind of gets a little bit into a gray area because we have multiple ignition interlock bills, and they all kind of overlap a little bit here and there. So the conversation's been a little bit split up between committees and everything. But to the to the point about, I think, as Smart Start was talking about, where, I mean, you've got different groups and some data for those, you know, .04 over, etc., as I've been mentioned. And currently, actually, it seems our laws, if you're, prepping from wrong, if you're driving, get into an accident or cause damage or an injury or something, and you're under .08 but over .05 or .04, I believe, there's additional penalties there that otherwise wouldn't have been illegal if you were just driving at, let's say, .07 and made it home safe. Is that right?
I'm I'm sorry. I'm not exactly sure what you're referring to.
So I think
Homicide, or?
No, no, just right now, as it stands, isn't there an additional penalty? So if you're driving, right now, anybody can drive at .07, just generally, that's legal, technically, yes. Maybe not a good idea, but legal. But if you're, if you're in an accident with somebody and you're at .07, then there's an additional, I'm not sure if it's a penalty, but other statute that kicks in, as I'm told, and I haven't specifically looked at this, this came up in another discussion on one of the other interlock bills.
I'm so sorry. I feel like I should be familiar with what you're talking about, unless you're talking about negligence, injury, negligence, homicide, which is a different charge altogether.
That might be, would the would the threshold of alcohol make a difference in that case, whether it's .08 over or under?
You mistake, and perhaps public defenders knows for this specific statute, but I don't think there's a specific red breath alcohol content in that statute.
I believe
Based on negligence, the fact that someone's driving impaired or under the influence of alcohol, or certainly over .08 would indicate negligence.
Sure. All right, let me ask you this way. If someone's pulled over, sorry, not to put you on the spot, I guess this would be for the public defender as well, but if someone's pulled over and is taken back to the the station, they end up blowing, let's say, a .7. But enough time had elapsed that they were pretty much for sure driving over the legal limit by, at the time that they were pulled over? Or demonstrated some sort of, let's say they did a field test and and they were clearly clearly impaired, but ended up blowing a .7. Is there, is there the ability to, is there a penalty and can an interlock at that point be required? Is that something that's done elsewhere?
Leave Alan Akow is raising his hand. Perhaps I could chime in based on what he says.
Oh, yeah, Mr. Chair. So I think the way this bill is written specifically for the ADLRO, excuse me, the interlock compliances, they would need a period of compliance before their license would be able to be returned. I think in that case, where even if a charge of DUI or some other traffic offense wouldn't be charged since it would be insufficient under the current law, HS291E61. But what it would do would be a violation of their compliance under the ignition interlock laws, which means their clock would be reset. Based upon the way this bill is written, it would require consecutive ignition interlock driving without violating a separate set of terms, which would be include having a a reading of over .04 when they were to start their ignition interlock, or to have a traffic stop, even if it wouldn't lead to a a ticket or a arrest, it would restart the clock for the purposes of ignition interlock compliance. That's all I can speak to, given.
I appreciate that. But so, so, sorry, the reason I'm asking all these questions is because this overlaps with another discussion going on with, you know, the nexus of all these interlock bills and just DUI bills in general. And but clearly, that wouldn't apply to a first-time offender because you wouldn't, at .04, .05, or .07, you'd still be within the legal limits. So I guess what I'm getting at is thinking about folks entering the system who are pulled over for the first time. You know, one of the other bills is looking at .05 threshold, which is a bit of a separate issue, but obviously, if that's, if that passes, then the measures and the considerations in this bill would theoretically apply, which complicates things a little bit. Let me ask you this way. Is there, is there, I guess, Tricia, back to you, is is there value in having a penalty below the .08 threshold for a first-time offender? That could potentially trigger an interlock, depending on the situation.
It's a, it seems like a somewhat general question. I suppose it would depend how the the offense, if it would be a new offense, how it would be structured, and how that penalty would be imposed, if not through a new offense. This particular bill doesn't seem to create anything like that. It just would prevent someone from getting there once they're already an offender and then get ignition, or choose to get ignition interlock, then they could never get their license unless they get it off. And then if they choose not to get ignition interlock, then they could get their license back after two years. So in some sense, it almost seems to disincentivize people from getting ignition interlock.
Okay. Okay. Thank you, everybody. Any further questions on this measure? If not, all right. Appreciate the discussion. Thank you very much. This is it's a little complicated with multiple bills and the same subject moving that are often overlapping, but
Thank you, Chair.
Okay, let's move on to the next measure, SB 2745 relating to aircraft, which requires the Director of Transportation to adopt rules that require tour aircraft operations to have insurance not less than $1 million per person per incident. And testifying first on 2745 is the Department of Transportation.
Good afternoon, Chair. We stand on our submitted comments.
Thank you. Up next is Blue Hawaiian Helicopters with comments, and Paradise Helicopters with comments. And that's all the testimony we have on 2745. Are there any questions? If not, all right, let's move on to SB. Actually, you know, while we're on this one, I do have one question for Department of Transportation.
Yes, Chair.
Thanks. Just looking at some of the federal restrictions in this space, just to be clear, FAA controls pretty much everything in the airspace above the ground. And so is, are we able to address insurance as it's set up in this bill in this particular case? Can we legally do that?
Well, under the federal grant assurance, we're supposed to make our facilities available for public use, and the terms that we impose for the users, which, you know, the rates and charges got to be reasonable. And we can, you know, we cannot apply it, but you know, we cannot discriminate, Senator.
And the levels of insurance, there seems to be federal mandates, or at least minimums. Is there anything else? I guess, let me ask you this way. Are we prohibited from changing the levels of insurance? Do we have any wiggle room at all? Is there, is there a ceiling at which we cannot go above that you're aware of?
I can answer that, Jay.
Okay.
Good afternoon, everyone. This is Ross Higashi, the Deputy Director for Airports Division. So we need to adhere to the Code of Federal Regulations. There's a minimum amount established by the FAA, so we cannot, that's the minimum that needs to be insurance requirement. Anything above that could be considered discriminatory if imposed.
Okay. Thank you very much.
You got it.
Okay. Any other questions on this one? If not, why don't we move on to the next measure, SB 2838 relating to aircraft noise, which requires the Department of Transportation specify rules, procedures, standards, and enforcement for mandatory noise abatement as part of the tour aircraft operator's permit. And testifying first on 2838 is the Department of Transportation.
Thank you, Chair. We stand on our testimony, offering comments.
You. Up next is Department of the Attorney General.
Good afternoon, Senator. My name is Dwayne Kokeish with the Attorney General's Office. We have submitted written testimony essentially indicating that the regulation of aircraft noise by state law is prohibited, preempted by federal law. I am available for comments or questions.
Thank you. Next is Pearl City Neighborhood Board. In support, Blue Hawaiian Helicopters with comments, Wahoo Tour Helicopter Safety Noise Interaction Group support, Paradise Helicopters comments. Hi, COP.
Yes. Aloha, Senators. My name is Bob, and I'm speaking for the Hi-COP board. And Hi-COP strongly supports SB 2838. It's common knowledge Hawaii is the most torn, copped, and negatively impacted state in the nation. Hawaii volcanoes is the number one national park in the nation impacted by tour helicopters, and Haleakala is number four. I think the testimony from the Attorney General and from the Department of Transportation is totally erroneous. There already exists the aircraft tour operator's aircraft permit. There already exists Paragraph D Fly Naval program. And the only purpose of this bill is to tell HDOT Airports Division, do your job and implement Paragraph D of the Fly Naval program. Hi-COP met with Ross Higashi, Airports Division, in 2016, and explained to him in detail how the impact is bad for our health, bad for our quality of life. And this is on every island in the state of Hawaii. Airports Division Higashi has done nothing since 2016 on this. That's over six years ago. The HASTF Committee, that's a responsibility of Ross Higashi and the Airports Division, existed, has been existing for two years, has five public hearings. They have done nothing. The Airports Division and Higashi have done nothing to address this. The purpose of this bill is so simple. It relates to the existing permit, the existing Paragraph D, and it's just saying to the Airports Division, do your job and implement Paragraph D Fly Naval program. It's no more than that. I don't think the testimony we read from the Attorney General and from HDOT AV, they even understood that that permit existed.
Okay, thank you very much. Up next, we have testimony from an additional nine individuals who submitted testimony all in support. Is that everybody we have on this measure? All right. Are there any questions on this measure? I've got, just to follow up on that point, is the AG still here?
Yes, Senator.
All right. So to that point, you know, we do have, we do have the tour operator's permit, which does have some, some requirements attached to it. To what extent, I guess, you know, this particular bill gets into some of the noise portions of that and what can be done? Where's the line drawn? What what is, what can be done, I guess?
Well, I think it gets very complicated very quickly. You know, for noise, for flight patterns, for the number of people, for safety, all of those things are clearly within the purview of the FAA and the EPA to some extent. So we can do things that's consistent with the feds, with the federal regulations, the FAA. But we can do things like a permit, we can say a permit, and we can ask for the same things that the FAA is requiring in a permit. But once we go above or beyond any of that, then that would be just prohibited because the fed law would most likely preempt it.
I mean, could we do something as simple as ask someone who's applying for a permit to file with a permit, whatever their plan might be to try and abate noise on their own?
I'm, I would guess that's probably permissible. It couldn't be something that would I think, I think you can I, I think, I think you can ask them to submit um, submit a plan to say, you know, what are you going to do to abate noise? Um, I, I don't know that there's much we could do to enforce it though. The, one of the, the individuals that was speaking said that, you know, DOT hasn't enforced and the. Part of the problem with that is DOT cannot enforce. If it's FAA regulation, it's the feds that have to enforce that. So there's, there's some. There's some restrictions on the DOT, what they can and cannot do. Uh, somebody would likely then if. We went too far in a regulation, that individual then likely sue the DOT to say you can't enforce this and. I mean, that was the case back in nineteen ninety five with. Um, Hawaiian helicopter operators association. So there's, there's precedent before it becomes very. Um. Case specific and rule specific as to how far we can go in on what rules and what um, you know, what specific areas of, of. Regulation can, we have any authority on.
Okay, thank you. Any further questions, Senator DeCoy?
So, um, I guess someone asked a deputy this question, Dwayne. Dwayne, um, has anybody actually from the federal government enforced anything? That you know?
That I don't know.
Um. Can I get Ross Higashi, please? Hey, Ross, he's still on.
Yep.
Hey, hi Ross, um, so, so Ross, you know, um, I, I know I've had this problem before, um, and I'll just say. Um, you know, the feds make a lot of rules. Um, I, I know that within the flight path zone, not just the noise part of it, but I've had, um. What are you posting? The drones, even like the drones, um. I know they have to register it and if they're within a flight path, they're automatically set down is. Is something like that possible or? Like, I don't think we could just sit and chop it down anyplace too, but I mean, we've done, dealt with the feds on access deer. Um, they're setting all the rules, but the state having to pay for all of the BS like. What, 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 what you think about that like?
Yeah, I mean, to make it really simple in our testimony, I'll just read it. Um, the FAA has the authority to regulate. The airspace and aircraft operations. Uh, the DOT has no authority. Uh, to establish rules or offer contract terms that attempts to manage flight operations of tour, uh, tour operators. So. Basically, very simple, simplistic is. We're in charge of our boundary within the airport facility or the airport, um, real estate, I should say. Anything outside of that. Uh, is under the jurisdiction of the, the FAA. So we need to draw the, the line. Of segregation between who's responsible for what. So. We wouldn't be in charge of airspace, for example, outside of the airport.
So, so I guess Ross is a congressional issue with the congressional guys?
Right, and we are writing to them um to see what they can do to help on. Get the FAA to do a little bit more enforcement regulations as well.
Okay, thanks, Ross. Thanks, Chair.
Okay, any further questions on this measure? All right, let's move on to the next measure, which is. Uh, SB two eight three eight, oh, excuse me, this is uh SB. Three, two, seven, two, which establishes the helicopter uh noise and safety task force. Uh, and requires DOT to adopt rules uh requiring. Insurance levels of ten million dollars and for helicopter uh tour permities to report details of their. Their flights that they take and testifying first on three, two, seven, two is the Department of Transportation.
Aloha, Chair. Uh, we stand on our comments as submitted. Thank you.
Thank you. Up next is Blue Hawaiian Helicopters. Uh, we have comments. Oh, uh, Wahoo Helicopter Safety and Noise Interaction Group in support. Paradise Helicopters with comments. Pearl City Neighborhood Board in support. Uh, we have comments from one individual and two in support. And I believe that's all the testimony we have in this measure. Are there any questions? Uh, if not, I've got just one for DOT if you're still here.
Yes, sure.
Uh, thanks. Uh, just to be clear, the. I mean, the, the issues in this bill are substantially similar to those in the prior bill. So when it comes to the insurance provisions, actually, I'm sorry, this should be for, for the Attorney General. Although you didn't weigh in, but hypothetically, I guess, since we're talking about the same basic structure of these bills. Uh, the same restrictions apply, so we can't regulate. Or is what, what's happening in the sky is unenforceable. Um, so. Were we to put into this measure, because this also touches on the tour permit. As a mechanism to compel some sort of action. Um, were we to put in something enforceable there that says? In order to qualify for the permit, you cannot do X, Y, and Z up in the sky. That would be unenforceable. Is that right?
Right, yeah, I would agree with that. Yes, I think that's a correct statement.
Um, however, if we were to put into the permit something like, uh. You got to report basic information um about whatever the, the relevant business stuff is that we typically require and these sorts of permits. That wouldn't affect any operation in the sky. Would that not trigger that same restriction?
I think, I think that that may be permissible. You know, as long as they're providing the same kind of information they're providing to the feds, uh, you know, if it's. Flight plans, some of that stuff, that's already pretty well laid out. So if it is just that they're providing us a courtesy, courtesy copy, or I should say providing to DOT, that might be permissible. Going beyond there, uh, like insurance, for example, or anything with operations, I think that that's really governed directly by feds and would be difficult for us to. To change that at all. I think that would be seen as something that's preempted by the fed law.
Okay, okay, thank you. Uh, any further questions from anyone else? All right, if not, thank you. Let's move on to the next measure. Senate Bill two four zero two relating to concessions, which provides the Department of Transportation with more flexibility. And discretion to address substantial hardship situations that impact airport concessions and testifying first is the Department of Transportation.
Thank you, Chair. Uh, we stand on our testimony of upbringing comments.
Thank you. Uh, up next is Airlines Committee of Hawaii.
Good afternoon, Chair, Vice Chair and members of the committee, Laurie Lem on behalf of the Airlines Committee of Hawaii. We are in opposition to Senate Bill two four oh two. Um, we believe this bill is unnecessary as the DOT already has the discretion to address substantial financial hardship situations. And they have, in fact, provided over one hundred twenty million um dollars in relief to date to concessionaires since the start of the pandemic. Um, the DOT has agreements with both the airlines and the concessionaires to establish financial and operational commitments to support the airport system. Um, legislating the ability of one party to a valid contract um to reduce their financial commitment. Is inequitable. Um, further, any reduction in concessions revenue to the DOT is directly passed on to the airlines. Additionally, we question the ambiguity and reliance on the term by verbal agreement. In section two modification, modification of contract terms on page four and page six. So for these reasons, we respectfully ask the committee to hold this bill. Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, up next on twenty four oh two is uh the Airport Concessionaires Committee.
Uh, hello, Chair and honorable um committee members. Jim Stone speaking on behalf of the. Uh, airport concession groups. We represent the majority of airport concessions. Um, we introduced this bill last year, uh, which only gave the DOT discretion. To provide relief in times of significant hardship. The bill does not mandate the DOT to provide any relief. It just gives the DOT the flexibility like other airports to grant relief in times of significant hardship. We introduced the bill last year because we saw that the contract provisions and Hawaii's laws. Tied the hands of the DOT and they were antiquated. The legislature gave the DOT the benefit of the doubt and said, no problems. We thanked the DOT for distributing a lot of money that Congress provided. Congress provided over five billion to the airlines. Congress directly to the airlines. They gave some monies to the airports with it shared with the concessions. The airports have the discretion how to distribute the funds. If it, if it doesn't want to hurt the airlines, then don't give monies to concessions. However, if it needs to give money to concessions so they can service passengers, then it's up to the DOT to decide. It's not up to the airlines to decide what is in the best interest of the airport. Now, because the bill did in pass last year, as we feared unfairness and injustice unfairness occurred. Some concessions got relief, some concessions got no relief. And some concessions got less relief. And this is totally unfair. And at the beginning of the relief period, we thanked the deputy because the airports was one of the first airports to grant. Uh, mag relief like other airports across the US. But then what happened was that after that money.
Mr. Stone, if you could um. Summarize yourself.
Okay, so basically, this bill is absolutely no threat. The airport can say no for any reasons. Uh, we proposed uh amendments. One is to clarify the airport has sole discretion. Another is to clarify that only in times of significant hardship. Uh, the maximum that can, and significant hardship can last a number of years during the concession. Uh, that it's only not more than ten years up to the DOT and we provided that.
Back in here, we, we gotta give everybody the same amount of time, but I'm sure we'll get into a discussion shortly. So let me stop you there.
Well, okay, enclosed.
Okay. And we also have testimony from United Here Local Five in opposition. And I believe that that's all the testimony we have on this measure. So are there any questions? All right, if not, um.
Chairman, Chairman Lee, uh, this Wendell Brooks, we, I did submit.
Oh, I'm sorry, you did. Um, you, you did. You're under, uh, on behalf of the Airport Concessionaires Committee, correct?
Yes.
Oh, yeah, okay, please go ahead.
Uh, thank you. Uh, but, uh, Mr. Chairman and Vice Chairman. Uh, and members of the committee, uh, uh, thank you for the opportunity to support Senate Bill twenty four oh two. Uh, my name is Wendell Brooks, Jr. I'm a professional real estate business consultant. Uh, and I strongly support uh Senate Bill twenty four oh two for the following reasons. When. In times of crisis, it is critical that a landlord such as the uh Hawaii Department of Transportation have. Broader discretion and flexibility to timely help concessionaires remain open. Serve the traveling public and for the benefit of the concessionaires as well for their own survival. Uh, and as has been reported, other airports on the mainland recognize that discretion and flexibility are important. Uh, as a means of uh granting relief uh go to significant hardship. Senate Bill twenty four oh two does not create risk for the Hawaii Department of Transportation. Since the type of relief is not mandatory and Hawaii Department of Transportation can deny for any reason. Senate Bill twenty four oh two corrects the unfairness that occurred, uh, that has occurred and need is needed to uh. Clearly state the broader flexible uh powers that Hawaii Department of Transportation needs. And that would help to reduce the uncertainty of applicable laws and contract provisions. Thank you for your time and consideration.
Thank you. Okay, did we miss anybody else? All right, if not, are there questions? Um, just following up, uh. Mr. Stone, if you're still with us.
Yes, yes, Senator.
Hi, so uh, just reading, it's, we have your written testimony, of course, and. Uh, this is the second year that we've heard this. I guess the first question would be, has anything changed between this year and last? Uh, both in your sort of end goal here, um, and of course, the situation on the ground.
Yes, it, uh, it has changed. Uh, Congress gave money to distribute to concessions to provide relief. Uh, that money is drying up. A lot of airports are giving, they can give money, so they're giving uh concessions an extension to recoup their losses. Also, uh, everybody expected a V-shaped recovery, but then uh Delta came along. And then again, Omicron came along. Everybody thought that this was going to be a V-shaped recovery, but this is going on for two years now. And um, and when it's going to come back, international travel is not back yet. And the state's economist says twenty nineteen tourism level is not going to return until uh late twenty twenty five. So the grocery seats, it's going to be a long haul for the concessions to survive. And we're asking like other airports. Please have the flexibility to help airport concessions. Our airports do not have that flexibility. Given the unfairness that has occurred and it's documented. We also have current problems that people put in improvements and they have no contracts. And they said, where's my contract? And the AG's office says, we can't give you a contract because the laws don't allow you to give a contract. And because of COVID, the deputy wanted to give everybody a two-year extension. Other airports gave three years' extension. But then the AG came along and interpreted the laws and the contract provisions and said. Well, I'm sorry, Mr. Deputy, you may have wanted to give two years, but the contract provisions and the laws as we interpret it. Some get two years, some get less, and some get nothing. I mean, that, that is, that is just the problem that we predicted and it has unfolded. Um, subsequent to the last legislative session. And the airport needs the flexibility like other airports. It doesn't mandate the airport to give one penny. But it does untie the hands of the airport, so the AG doesn't say you can't do this and you can't do that. You do have the flexibility like other airports. Thank you.
Thank you. And so, uh, DOT. Uh, I guess the same thing, uh, you know, this is the second year we've sort of been engaged in some of these discussions. Um, I, I guess, what's changed between last year and, and this?
I can answer that. So first of all. As far as changes are, we provided a two-year uh mag relief. So from April first, twenty twenty, it goes all the way to April first or March thirty first, twenty twenty two. That's a two-year period. So what happened is, um, if a. Business, say, for example,'s lease ended on May first, twenty twenty. We were only able to give a one-month extension because the period of disruption was only one month. Um, also want to iterate that we are, we have a uh residual system. So at the end of the day, if there's any shortfall, the airlines would be uh financially responsible for that shortfall. Uh, we applied the federal uh stimulus. That's what is different over the last year. We got more stimulus monies, but. We followed the guidelines of the uh federal stimulus, FAA regulations on how to apply. The stimulus accordingly to the air, um, our financials. So there's a piece of the pie that did go under the Krista Grant. Uh, and part of it on the ARPA grant to the concessions. Um, so as far as what is different between last year and this year. Um, we still have that discretion if we want to allow another year of, of waiver or mag relief. We can do that. So at this point, the airlines are on percentage rent only, not airlines, but sorry, the concessions. So if they don't generate any uh gross receipts or gross revenue, they, they pay zero rent at, at this point. So that is the relief.
Okay, thank you. And then, um, just, just for the uh folks watching, we may need to take a short break. Uh, for votes in another committee, so uh. We'll know shortly here if that's going to be the case or not. Um, but returning back to Mr. Stone, um, on this point. So for your purposes. I mean, is it, I guess, more the um. Direct relief or is it more the contract extension and lease extension issue that? direct relief or is it more the contract extension and lease extension issue that that I guess priority?
Well, I mean, it's it's a number of things. It's not only those two things, Senators. For example, if a concession cannot survive, the bill gives the concession to exit the airport without penalty. And if the concession operator has someone to take its place, the bill gives the flexibility to allow the DOT to allow that swap to occur. It also allows the concession to leave without losing its performance bond and being barred from doing business with the state for 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 five years. And there is no threat because they talk about a threat to the airlines and a threat to airport finances. How can that occur? Let's use some common sense. How can that occur if the DOT can decide not to give the concessions anything? Let's please apply some common sense to these arguments that are full of holes. There is no threat. The airport is under no threat, and it's up to the DOT to decide. And if it can't afford it, it's going to hurt the airlines, it's going to hurt the DOT. The DOT has the right to say no, just like other airports. We want to give them the same powers. And but if crises occur and they have to work with a concession, other airports gave, other airports that didn't suffer like Hawaii, they gave all the concessions, three years across the board, whether you were short-term, long-term, you got three years across the board, a chance to operate on an extension to recover your losses. Hawaii didn't do that. You heard what he said. Some got two years, some got less, and some got absolutely nothing. They all suffered cancer. They all suffered business cancer, but they didn't treat them all fairly. And 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 that is the problem because the AG said, you cannot do it. The deputy said in our discussions, I'm going to give you all two years across the board. And then the AG came along and said, no, you can't do that because of the laws and the contract restrictions. That's why Hawaii couldn't do what other airports did. And this bill is absolutely no threat. It is a smokescreen to say it's going to be a threat to the DOT or a threat to the airlines or a threat to anyone.
So hold on, hold on there just a second. Let me call up the Airlines Committee.
Yes, Chair, I'm here.
Still with us? Okay, thanks. So in your testimony, you opposed, just reading it, you're basically saying, any reduction, I'm just quoting here, any reduction in concessions revenue to DOT is passed on to the airlines.
Correct.
So in the case of federal dollars and relief and and contract terms, how is that something that the airlines pay for if it's coming from the federal government? Or if if it's just an extension on contract?
And I'm not sure of the question. I mean, they. Okay, I might have to defer to Ross on that, but I do know that anything that creates a shortfall that is passed on to us also could affect our bond, the bond rating agencies, because anything that where revenue is an uncertainty, we create a risk. Now, in this case, you're saying that, okay, what the federal government issued monies and how was that distributed? And how would that affect this bill? So that that I I'm not sure, Senator. Perhaps Ross can address that.
Okay, sure. Ross, go ahead, and we'll come back to James after.
So as far as there's, I think, could you repeat your question one more time to be clear?
Oh, just real quick, I think that the general gist of what the Airlines Committee was saying is that any reduction from concessions gets picked up by the airlines. To Mr. Stone's point, I guess, looking for, you know, additional certainty through contracting or if there's additional relief from the feds that we can capitalize on theoretically, it wouldn't seem to impact the airlines directly as far as I can figure out. I'm just trying to understand that.
Well, I mean, as far as it's a it's a scale, right? You got airline money coming in and you got concession money coming in. So the more concession money that comes in, the less the airlines pay and vice versa. So in this case, the stimulus helped the shortfall. But in a regular situation, if there is a shortfall, the airlines would always have this part of the airline airport lease agreement. So if there's any financial shortfall, the concessions wouldn't pick up the difference. It would be the airlines that would pick up the difference. And as far as revenues are concerned, if that is the case where it's more unbalanced, then you could, it could affect your bond rating because the raiders look for a balanced portfolio of revenue.
So thanks for that. So Mr. Stone, did you have a comment on that?
Yes, the bill has a provision that says it will not impair any contractual obligation or bondholders of the state. So the bill has a provision on that. What the DOT has to do, Mr. Chair, is it has to keep the concessions open to service passengers. And to the extent it needs to service its passengers and travelers, it will need from time to time to provide relief to concessions. And it's up to the airport to decide how much relief to provide to concessions so they can remain open, feed the passengers before they get on their long flights and help them survive. The the DOT is the landlord. How much do I help concessions and how much do I help airlines? It they decide, and this is this is no mandate. They have to decide and juggle what is in the best interest of the airport, not necessarily what is in the best interest of the airlines. I I gotta service my passengers, and if I decide.
Let me stop you there for a sec because I recognize we've been going on for some time. But just real quick, back to Ms. Lum for one second. So to be clear, you're not worried about the federal relief. You're worried about just the switch of or loss of revenue from concessions.
Yes, yes, Chair.
Okay, thanks. Just wanted to clear that up. Okay, appreciate it. Okay, further questions? Anybody else? All right, if not. Why don't we move on then? Thank you, everybody, for the robust discussion on this. The last measure on our agenda today is SB three, three, six, one relating to airports, which establishes an airport advisory working group. And testifying first on three, three, six, one is the Department of Transportation.
Good afternoon, Chair. We stand on our testimony offering comments. Thank you.
Thank you. Department of Budget and Finance's comments. Airlines Committee Hawaii.
Chair Laurie Lum, on behalf of the Airlines Committee Hawaii. We respectfully oppose Senate Bill three, three, six, one. The ACH and the DOT Airports Division coordinate very closely on all capital improvement projects. And we do have input, excuse me, from local and mainland consultants that have global experience in designing and modernizing airports. Sorry, the customer experience is always top of mind, and we would like to avoid passengers being inconvenienced by antiquated facilities. The new Malka concourse is an example of the successful collaboration of the ACH, DOTA, and consultants that led to a modern and efficient concourse. And it also reflects local culture design elements. Unlike other state departments and authorities, the airports are self-sustaining. They must meet stringent operating safety and security standards three hundred sixty-five days of the year. Additionally, Hawaii has a uniquely complex fifteen airport system that makes it very challenging to efficiently operate and maintain. It's always been our goal for Hawaii's airports to reflect the very best of our state and our culture and meet or exceed expectations of our travelers. So we believe the bill is well-intended, but will add another layer of oversight, and that is likely to delay the completion of airport improvement projects. Thank you for your consideration of these comments.
Thank you. And Airport Concessionaires Committee.
Chair Lee and Honorable Senators, we are in very strong support of this bill. Let this one, let the light shine in. We have heard HTA and so many people in the in the tourist industry talk about the problems that are going on in the airport, how it appears, and all the problems and so forth. Why aren't things this way or that way? And, you know, so let the light shine in. And 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 we think that this is a great idea, and it will lead to a lot of improvements. And I think it would quite honestly motivate people to do a better job. I think the DOT recently has been trying, but there's a lot more to do. We think it's a great idea. You know, a lot of people in the visitor industry and elsewhere in the community are concerned that how things are run and operated at the airport. We are in strong support, Chair Lee, and we hope you pass out this bill.
Thank you. Okay, I believe that's all the testifiers we have this afternoon. Are there any questions on this measure? All right, if not, I'll note real quick, the, so for housekeeping purposes, I had mentioned earlier that we might have to take a quick break for votes in another committee. It looks like that committee was able to make quorum and wrap up, so I think we're off the hook there. That said, it is four o'clock. We did have a number of these bills, so we are at the end of our agenda. Why don't we break for, take a quick break, recess for decision-making? IT, can you? Okay, we're reconvening the Committee on Transportation for decision-making on our last agenda of the Senate Bills for the session. Up first is Senate Bill three, three, one, two relating to the Photo Red Light Imaging Detector Systems Program. This makes housekeeping amendments to the Photo Red Light Imaging Detector Systems Program. So we'd like to move this forward. I'll note it goes on to the JDC WAM committees. We just would like to add in a defective date. Any comments, questions on this? If not, with our Vice Chair excused, since there's a conflicting set of hearings that were going on earlier, I'll take the vote. So voting on Senate Bill three, three, one, two, recommendation is to pass with amendments. I'll vote I, Vice Chair excused. Senator Decoy?
I.
Senator Shingbukro? Hope you're muted.
I.
And Senator Favella?
I.
Thank you. As you're adopted. Okay, moving on to SB one fifty relating to ignition interlock devices, which requires consecutive terms of imprisonment for anyone convicted as repeat or habitual offender, among other things. And I'll note, this was a carryover bill from last year, so some of its provisions have been discussed in other measures that are either have moved already or are moving through the various committees. So what we're going to do is we'll defer this measure and forward with the next ignition interlock bill, and we'll try and consolidate what we're doing, so we're not passing ten million bills on the same subject. Okay, so moving on to SB two, one, three, three relating to the statewide traffic code. This prohibits any person whose driver's license has been administratively revoked relating to driving a vehicle under the influence and prohibits a person from driving for two years if the person does not own or have the use of a vehicle for the installation of an ignition interlock device. This is, so again, as I mentioned, we have a number of different ignition interlock bills, so we're going to try and consolidate just a little bit here. So what we'd like to do, noting, I think, some of the disagreement between various parties. I know both the prosecutors and the public defenders have raised some issues, which, when they're both on the same side, that's it's a rare day. But we would like to move the bill forward for further discussion. So what we're going to do is we're going to remove the provisions currently contained in the bill. We'll merge the bill with the last one that we just heard with some of those issues. So we'll add in expanding the offense of circumventing or tampering with an ignition interlock to include obscuring the camera lens or not providing a picture of a driver. Secondly, we'll add in requiring anyone operating a vehicle with ignition interlock to a valid government-issued ID in immediate possession. And I think to the point of the conversation that we had earlier about point oh five to point oh eight, as well as some of those similar discussions going on in the ignition interlock DUI space in all these bills in recent days, we'd like to add in something which we hope can be a bit of a compromise for those folks who HPD pulls over, takes them back to the station, and then they blow like a point seven because just too much time has passed. We'd like to establish a traffic fine for driving under the influence when you're between point oh five to point oh eight. So we'll leave that blank, but it's just a regular traffic ticket that does not trigger the DUI, the current DUI penalties. But it at least will help, I think, provide some compromise when it comes to what to do about those folks that are right on the cusp and allow our communities to be able to message that, you know, we should be a little more responsible and not just immediately jumping in our car after we had a bunch of drinks. So lastly, we'll add in a defective date to the bill. So we'll let judiciary, who's getting all the ignition interlock bills and DUI bills, take this up as well as part of their conversation. So any questions or comments on this one? If not, I'll be taking the vote on SB two, one, three, three. Recommendation is to pass with amendments. I'll vote I, Vice Chair, excused. I'll call it since I already started. Senator Decoy?
I.
Senator Shingbukro?
I.
And Senator Favella?
I.
All right, measure is adopted. Okay, moving on to SB two, seven, four, five relating to aircraft. This requires the Director of Transportation to adopt rules, ensuring one million dollars per person insurance per incident for aircraft operators. We'd like to move this forward. We recognize that there's significant federal and other restrictions on what can be done here. So we'd like to blank out the amount of the insurance requirement and add in a defective date, but move it on and see if we can't resolve something in the the days to come. So any questions or comments on this? All right, if not, voting on SB two, seven, four, five, recommendation is to pass with amendments, noting the Vice Chair excused. Are there any reservations or no's? If not, everyone else votes I, and the measure is adopted. Thank you, everyone. Okay, moving on to SB two, eight, three, eight, which requires DOT to specify rules, procedures, and standards and enforcement for mandatory noise abatement as part of the tour aircraft operators permit. As I'd love to move this forward, but clearly, I think the AG had raised concerns about enforceability, and we just can't enforce what's happening in the sky. So I do have some thoughts about how to move forward, but it's going to have to take a different form. And we'll go talk to the introducer about about this. So for the moment, we'll defer SB two, eight, three, eight and move on to SB three, two, seven, two relating to transportation, which establishes the Helicopter Noise and Safety Task Force and requires ten million dollars of insurance coverage and reporting. And we'd like to amend this one. Again, we're significantly restricted by federal law. So what we'd like to do is, since we already addressed the insurance component in another bill, we'll remove the insurance provision in the bill, so there'll be no insurance requirement in this bill. We'll also change the name of the task force to the Air Noise and Safety Task Force, and we'll change references to helicopters to aircraft just to keep it general for the task force. We'd also put in that we want representatives of the helicopter and aircraft smaller craft industries as working group members, as well as representatives of communities affected by aircraft noise and safety issues from around the state. And we'd also like to require the members to serve, we'll say, two-year terms so that they actually. so that they actually switch out and we don't have the same group of people on this thing forever. And then finally, we'd like the information that's being collected by and reported by some of the helicopter and other aircraft companies to be reported monthly. So I believe that's all recommendations for that one. And hopefully, at least it seems from the comments from the Attorney General and others, that could actually pass muster. So any questions or comments? All right, if not, take the vote on SB 3272, recommendation is to pass with amendments. Noting Senator Noe excused, are there any other reservations or no's? All right, seeing none, recommendation is adopted. Thank you, everybody. Moving on to the last two measures. SB 2402 relating to concessions. This provides the Department of Transportation with flexibility and discretion to address situations of substantial hardship. This is the one we had the significant discussion on. I appreciate everyone's time on this. This is going to take some time to sort through. And I think we're going to work with airports and concessionaires and some of the other stakeholders on this. But I will note with our House companions, the House companion measure to this has already moved through to committees and is on the way over to the Senate. So, and that's signed by a significant number of the members of the House. So what we'll do is we'll defer the Senate measure and we'll take up the House vehicle when it crosses. And then finally, SB 3361 relating to airports, which establishes the Airport Advisory Working Group to try and improve the airports. We'd like to move this forward, making some amendments because I think it's clear from everybody that we want to improve our airports and we certainly want to take a stab at that. So what we'll do is, first thing we'll do is limit this measure only to Honolulu International Airport. And then we'll, to the working group, we'll add a labor representative. We'll add a concessionaire's representative. We'll also change the chairs to be appointed by the House and the Senate rather than specifically named. We'd like to also add one position to lead the effort who's got an architecture or planning background, and we'll switch the funding to B funds, to special funds, to help pay for that. And then we'll just say that DOT Airport shall collaborate along with this group. Finally, we'll add in a defective date to this measure as it goes forward. So we're going to work with airports. I know they've raised some concerns about this, but at the end of the day, I think we want to see something, something good there. So we'll work collaboratively and keep this alive in the meantime. So any questions or comments on this? If not, all right, take the last vote on SB 3361. Recommendation is to pass with amendments. Noting our Vice Chair excused, are there any reservations or no's? If not, everyone votes aye and the measure is adopted. All right, to our committee members, mahalo for a bunch of great hearings. To our testifiers and our staff especially, a big mahalo as we meet this deadline today to move all these measures on to the next set of committees. With that, we are adjourned. Mahalo, everybody.